Hi, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 27 Board Meeting for the Kitsap Regional Library Board of Trustees. I am President Eric Fong. With me are Marwan Cameron, Eric Sisney, and Monica Blackwood. Vice President Gina Steiner is out on an excused absence. Call the meeting to order at 5:31. We'll go to Agenda Item 2, the Kitsap Regional Library Mission Statement, read by Monica Blackwood.
Hello. The mission statement for Kitsap Regional Library is inspiring curiosity and connection.
Thank you, Monica. Jason, we're welcoming introductions.
Yes, good evening, welcome. And with us tonight is Executive Assistant Tammy Jeffries, Deputy Director of Public Services Shannon Peterson, Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, Wendy Kyle, Director of Strategy and Communications Jeannie Allen, and last but not least, Director of Facilities and IT Mike Rose. Excused tonight is Dan Baer, Deputy Director and Chief Financial and Operating Officer, and ready to go. And no special guests tonight, but we do have a mission moment. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jason. No additions or changes to the agenda, and there is no public comment tonight. So we'll go to Agenda Item 6, the Consent Agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. In the consent agenda are 6.01 Minutes of the April 22, 2025 Regular Board Meeting, 6.02 Minutes of the May 16, 2025 Board Retreat Meeting, 6.03 Payment of April 2025 Expenditures, and 6.04 Surplus Library Materials Withdrawn from the Collection for April 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I saw a move.
There's a second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Motion passes. Makes sense. Thank you. With that, we'll go to Agenda Item 7.01, Mission Moment: Journey of the Holds.
What you're about to see is who has placed an item or items on hold before. That should be everybody. So we find it fascinating to just show sort of the inside journey of how a hold gets processed through our system. So it's a really fun video. There's lots of stakeholders involved in this. And most notably, you'll see George there handling crates that are going out, and this video is self-explanatory. But we'll have a couple comments from some of our directors who all play a role in how holds gets from the library out to the final customer. So let's just let it roll and go from there.
Every time someone puts something on hold at Kitsap Regional Library, it triggers a chain reaction. First, a library staff person pulls the list of that day's holds. In this case, it's Andrew. Then he hits the floor. Each item is pulled from the shelf and checked off the list. Then it's scanned into the system and given a tag indicating where it will be delivered. Each tag is a different color for each branch. All items are grouped by their branch destination and packed into bins. When items reach the shipment fill line, the bin is closed and prepared for delivery. That's where the couriers come in. This is George. Library couriers want to deliver as many holds as they can as efficiently as possible. Here's how it works. Both the South and the North drivers start at Sylvan Way, the biggest library in the system. The Northern driver, usually Gerald, will fill the van with the day's delivery, then drive to Pauls Bow, Bainbridge Island, Kingston, and finally Little Boston before returning to Sylvan. Meanwhile, George goes to Silverdale, another big branch, drops off all of their items and picks up all their outgoing items. Then he'll drop off all the northbound items at Sylvan Way for Gerald to take the next day. Then George reloads the van with items heading south and drives to Port Orchard, another big branch, and drops off their items. At Port Orchard, they'll pack holds up to the wire, so he'll make his deliveries to Manchester first, then loop back to Port Orchard to get everything they have ready. Then he'll go to the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Branch before ending the day back at Sylvan. And then the next day, it starts all over again. Back at Silverdale, library staff unpack deliveries. In this case, Lynn is on the job. She scans everything into the system. If an item is a hold, the computer prints a receipt with the first four letters of the patron's last name. Lynn scans each hold, putting them in order, one after the other, after the other, after the other. Then she heads out to the shelves. Each item is shelved alphabetically, and then the hold is ready, just like that.
Pretty short and sweet. Big shout out to Communications and Caitlin for making this video. And I think it's just, again, I learned something new. I didn't know the full extent of how the couriers do their routes in terms of, you know, how they set about doing them and which stops they make. So certainly educational for me. But even think from our internal customers, it's a good view of how other folks in our library do their jobs and gives us a greater appreciation of all the work that goes into, you know, getting materials from place to place. Because, you know, oftentimes in branches, you're only seeing, I mean, if you know the couriers and you see them come in every day, you obviously know. But generally, you are at the point of processing, pulling that pick list or pull list and getting those materials and/or taking those materials out of the crates and putting them either back on the shelf or putting them on the hold shelf for your patrons to pick them up. And so I think just from the standpoint of Mike's team, you know, they don't get to see the other side of it when a patron is satisfied for a hold that they've been waiting for for the last two months, especially if it's a very popular bestseller. But just big shout out also to Mike's team, too, because that's a lot of work. And then Shannon's teams, all the folks that spend lots of hours pulling those materials and making sure that they're available and even looking for materials that are lost. That's the other part of it, is you might get a pull list and a book might be misplaced, it may have gotten set down. Or if it's like me, when I used to pull them in, when I worked in that, I would often be very interested in a book and would set it aside for a bit just to read it a little bit and then kind of forget to put it on the shelf right away, which is a no-no, by the way. Don't do what I have done before. So that's it. I'll get out of the way and let some other people chime in on this journey. Or if any questions from our trustees about this process, it's a very short video, so thank you.
No, appreciate the video. It's a good reminder of the effort and the volume of books that moves while we, you know, make the requests on our app and just wait for our book to be ready. Everything that's in motion. God, I got to apologize for all the books that I did not pick up within seven days. I'm sorry. But no, it's wonderful. It's those little things that, you know, we don't want to take that effort and the staff's word for granted. So thank you for sharing. Does anybody else have anything to share, whether leadership or board members?
Just looking at the process, it doesn't seem like there's any other way to make it more efficient. It's really quick once the way the route is going back and forth. And once that book is, or that item is turned in, it gets back quickly into circulation. So that's fantastic.
Mike, from a logistical side, anything, any insights to give the trustees on this process, at least from your team?
It's not an exciting job. I'll tell you that. You know, both Walt and I have done ride-alongs with George and Gerald. It's not exciting. It is one of those jobs that's the same thing every day, but I will tell you that these two guys love doing it, and they do it happily. I think George has been with us for like 14 years, and Gerald is probably coming up on nine. And they know what they do and they do it well. And everybody counts on them to be there. And, you know, it's not just those crates. It's sometimes they get some interesting stuff to move around. So they used to move around a ton of computers. We try not to do that as much anymore. But it's some of the, it's the kits and all kinds of different things that they're moving around from branch to branch. And there really isn't any other way to do it. You know, that's just it. There might be different ways of manipulating the routes, but they're, you know, we're so spread out geographically that it takes those vans, it takes people driving those vans and delivering those crates. So, and each of them, depending on the day, and like today would have been a heavy day after a holiday weekend, they'll move anywhere from on a, like a Friday when there's not a lot going on, like maybe 50 crates a day, to a day like today where they'll each have probably 150 of those packed heavy crates that they're moving around between branches. So it's kind of the heart of how stuff moves around, you know, between our branches. And like I said, it's not a job I would, I would love to do every day, but these guys love doing it. So, and we appreciate having them.
Yeah, thank you very much. Definitely appreciate the share. We will go to 7.02, Board Member Updates. Who would like to go first?
Well, I went to the 80th Anniversary Celebration at Silverdale on May 9, and that was really successful, I thought. A lot of people, met some people. One guy came from Edmonds just because he likes libraries and he heard about this, so he showed up at our 80th Anniversary. Anyway, I thought that was really successful. And then I attended our board retreat a week later. That's about it, I guess.
Great, thank you, Eric. I did the same, both the 80th Anniversary, which I was really happy to attend. It was good to be back in the Silverdale Library. Saw a lot of smiling faces and some happy folks, including my son, who was very happy to be there. The Board Meeting, our Board Retreat, also attended. Also attended the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation Board Meeting a couple of weeks ago. And also attended the annual Bainbridge Public Library Board Retreat. That is the group that takes care of the building and the facilities in the Bainbridge Public Library. So got to talk about some of their upcoming, their upcoming big ticket items, one of them being pursuing solar panels, which is very cool. Jason was also there and shared his library of the future again. So that's always exciting to hear what Jason has in store. Also, last weekend, I picked up my set of mugs. So I was very happy about that. Got my mugs.
Did you get all the mugs?
Yes.
Oh, okay, alright.
Twice, because I'm gifting one set to my uncle.
You got two sets of mugs? Well, I have my mug here. This is the Martin Luther King mug here. I also attended the Board Retreat, which was very informative. Outside of that, we are having the 23rd Annual Kitsap Juneteenth Freedom Festival here in Kitsap County again, and that will be on June 14. And the library always takes part in that. I definitely will be there and look forward to it. That's 10 o'clock for the Freedom March, and then the event is at 11:00. So a lot of good information. And last year, the library gave out books there, which was really powerful and awesome. So looking forward to that.
Back. Do I need to start over?
I don't think I picked up.
Okay. So while I have not been able to attend many of the functions because of scheduling conflicts this spring, I have been able to talk a bit about the library services in my Olympic College Business 101 class that I teach, namely have been plugging the continuing ed aspects of the services that the library provides and letting people know that the library provides classes and that they have services. And one day, we got into a discussion about LinkedIn, and I said, "Don't forget, you might be able to use Hazelwood Library on campus, but I know for sure you can go to your local regional library for KRL and access all the LinkedIn learning sessions that your heart desires." From a business standpoint, that's really a good way to develop your skill set and so forth. So I've been using KRL services in my classes.
Great, thank you very much. We will go to 7.03, Finance Committee Report. Eric?
Yeah, well, everything is looking good. To quote Jason in his April financial report, "With four months elapsed, expenditures and revenues are within the general parameters." That's about all there is to say this month, but looking good.
Great, thank you. And we'll go to 7.04, Financial Report. Jason?
Yes, presenting on behalf of our Chief Financial and Operating Officer, Deputy Director of Dan Baer, as Eric Sisney talked about, finances are tracking on target. Revenues are tracking just slightly higher just due to our infusion of tax dollars from the April tax drop, and that's normal for this type of year. Otherwise, we are on target, and the report will stand as written. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jason. Are there any questions about the financial report? Okay. With that, we'll go to 7.05, Jason, for the Library Director's Report.
Yes, not a lot here. Just wanted to focus on April's activities. The organization focused on workforce development as a strategic planning topic, and it's one of the key pillars of what we do. Monica just mentioned some aspects of workforce development, of course, with trainings and things like that. But across our system, it's all about empowering people using the tools that we have to be able to, you know, spur personal and economic growth for them. And through, whether it's, you know, getting someone resume help and/or, you know, just regular digital literacy assistance while using our technology, small business support, our, you know, our teen volunteer program, our community learning internship, those are all, those all truly demonstrate how we are able to impart workforce development, particularly amongst our youth in our library. It's really important to have a youth that is trained up and has the ability to work and contribute to this economy here. And I'm, you know, proud to work for a library system that centers that for our youth and has opportunities, not only for youth, but for adults as well, young adults. Other things in terms of engagement for me, last month, continuing to support Avid in terms of mentoring, get asked lots of questions about the library and that space. I always feel like when I'm in spaces like that, it's important to talk about my role and what I do to attract the next generation of library workers. And so been really fortunate to be able to just take over in that space, to be able to really impart some form of mentorship to the young students there. It's really been a benefit to me understanding more about the community. Other than that, Shannon and myself attended the Bermerton Food Lines Bridging the Gap Breakfast, which was really inspirational breakfast, where we got to see the impact that the Bermerton Food Line has in the community, as well as other community partners who are part of the nourishing network that Shannon has really jumped into and taken off with. So proud of the work that we're doing in the community. Continued regular site visits in terms of meeting with folks in our branches. As you know, I meet with the managers quarterly just to talk and figure out what's happening in their locations. Really a pillar of, I think, for me, leadership means listening, asking, figuring out where, you know, where people's perspectives are coming from. And not only to listen to that, but to experience it by visiting locations in person. It's something I thought I would only do for a year or so, but I found it really valuable to work at locations once a year still, to be able to have that, those community touchpoints. And again, it's, for me, it's a way to stay close to home. It's a way to stay close to how I was come, how I came up in libraries. So I'm fortunate that I'm able to still take part in that, and that's been a real sort of inspiration for me to see how our people work and what they do on the floor every day. And I do want to get into more departments. You know, I talked to, speaking of the journey of the holds, actually planned, Mike, we have to go, and Dan, Dan, I think, might be watching. We have to go through the legal, the liability of me getting out. I mean, I've done it in a truck before. I won't drive, but I want to get out and take the holds journey and drive with the couriers just to see how that process works, to be able to actually get out and take crates into branches. So stay tuned for that, that's going to come up. I want to get in some of the other departments to shadow and figure out where I can work versus be in the way, because there'll be some departments like CTS where I would probably just be in the way. Even though I took a cataloging class, I could probably catalog if I really wanted to. I can pull out my old cataloging books. However, that's something I plan to do as well. And then open office hours continues to be a forum that I want to provide for staff to be able to have conversations with the library director about their work, about their lives, and just to have an area where people can provide feedback for me and my job, too. Because not only have we gotten feedback from my leaders and feedback from the trustees, you, but it's important to also get feedback from the people that my leaders manage, too, because I don't want to be close-minded to the feedback that's coming from our everyday employees. And so that's a space where I, that's allowable. I mean, it's allowable in any space. And so having open office hours is something I really want to continue. Had a really nice open office hour session last Friday with a couple folks, and those are confidential, the content is confidential. The only parameter that I give folks is that if they have complaints about any other staff member, that it not be brought into that space, just because it should be brought to their immediate supervisors first, unless it wasn't resolved in that space. So still continue to provide a space like that where people can have open opportunity for feedback, because a lot of people think the feedback has to come top-down, and it doesn't. It can be offered, and we preach safe spaces in all of our places, with our leaders here, with the people that they supervise, our mid-level managers, and with me. They're all safe spaces. Someone can come in that space and say, "I don't like the job you're doing." And I can say, "Very well. I thank you. Tell me why." Right? Because that's the way it should go. The other things in terms of staff recognition and culture, we continue to try to uplift staff and through the vehicle of staff recognition. And so you'll see in the board report that we have recognized folks for second quarter contributions along the lines of our values. And so really proud of the staff that are doing really good work and being nominated by their peers in that regard. And then also on a culture-related front, we celebrated Library Worker Appreciation Day a bit early last month just because of things that were happening, and we were able to take mugs out to all of our staff with treats in it. And that was a really good opportunity to get out and show love for our staff who, you know, work on the front lines and behind the scenes to make the library go. And then the last thing, you know, we still continue to track statistics in terms of how people are engaging with the library. And people are still engaging in the library in the physical realm and in the digital realm really well, and in terms of visitors. And so I think that all of those are, it's all trending up at least 5% year-over-year, and library visits are up 5%. And I think that that's continually been since COVID. Libraries have fully rebound in terms of the engagement from our patrons and in terms of, and yet our jobs aren't done. You can see all of the special effort that was put into having some beautiful swag for the 80th Year Anniversary that Communications put their all into and that Public Services put their all into making sure it was available and consumed, and then from the couriers to taking all that stuff out. It's been really neat to see how people have engaged in the 80-year anniversary celebrations, watching it, both, you know, when I've worked at branches, and also watching it when we had the 80th Year Anniversary Party. There were people who flew right in and were trying to get passports on and mugs picked up. And so it really shows that we already have the patronage who are excited about a library, because you have to be excited to want to participate in grabbing a mug and getting a passport. I think it serves the purpose of getting people out in their community and getting a real understanding of what the library is about. But also, what it does is it creates a lot of excitement and buzz, not only amongst our patrons, but staff, too, because we were all excited about the mugs. I drink out of my mug every day. I have one at home that I am pretty protective of and don't want anybody else to drink out of it, but I know I have to share. And then lastly, we are really excited to move into the summer. Summer reading is coming up soon. June 1, it starts. T-shirts will be, I think I see a t-shirt there. Mr. Cameron has a t-shirt. And so get excited for the summer, because that's the next big thing. And that's all I have for this month. Any questions?
Who comes up with the awesome sayings on the t-shirts every year?
I'm going to turn it over to Communications to answer that.
I would say that is a collaborative effort that we have in the Communications Department. We have a lot of fun throwing around pun ideas that will capture the essence of the theme that we've selected. The themes are usually generated through surveys from our staff where we just kind of ask, like, "What are you hearing out in the community? What are you excited about? What do you hope for?" So right now, we're actually in that process of kind of delving into what the theme for 2026 might be, and then everything comes out of that. So it's shrimply amazing.
Another winner.
Love them. Thank you, Jason. With that, we'll go to 7.06. We'll go right back to Jeannie for the Kitsap Regional Library Annual Report.
All right, good evening. I'm excited to share the library's annual report reflecting our 2024 accomplishments and the direction we're heading. 2024 marked our first full year guided by our strategic direction. This has shaped how we plan partners, how we plan partner and deliver services. It centers equity, curiosity, and service, our values that guide our every intention. And while I invite you to view the full report on our website, and we shared a PDF of that website report in your board docs, I'd like to share a few of my favorite highlights from the report. So first, we'll start with some stats. Libraries remain strong. Our libraries serve more than 107,000 Kitsap households, and we have more than 86,000 cardholders in 2024. Each card represents a patron, roommates, or partners sharing a card, a family, or an educator. And don't forget that in three of our Kitsap School Districts, the entire district, the students, and the teachers all are provided a card. So the cardholders keep us busy. They checked out or renewed more than 2.6 million books, ebooks, audiobooks, movies, magazines, CDs, DVDs, kits, telescopes, ukuleles, and more. We also offered nearly 3,000 classes and events that welcomed and inspired more than 55,000 kids, teens, and adults in 2024. With our 131 public computers, patrons took advantage of free internet access, logging more than 59,000 hours. Those are folks that are connecting with their loved ones, learning new skills, applying for jobs, managing healthcare and household needs, or simply staying informed. And we delivered monthly mobile services to more than 200 homes, healthcare centers, and group facilities. So every one of these numbers represents a person making a connection, which is pretty great. So together, in 2024, our staff made meaningful strides towards a more welcoming and supportive library. We brought back teen field trips, connecting students to real-world learning and library resources. We increased hours and brought more consistency to our schedules, including the return of Sunday hours. And we began the essential work of supporting a language access plan with the goal of making our spaces and services more accessible to more members of our community. So our aim as an organization is to ensure that everyone sees themselves reflected in the library. In 2024, we remained true to our core services, but we also had a year of transformation. We began the year celebrating the renaming of our Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Library. It seems like a long time ago, but it really was the beginning of 2024. We stayed the course and continued to grow our collections, key programs, summer learning, the community learning internship to the library, and storytimes. And we celebrated key milestones with Little Boston turning 50 and our Port Orchard rounding 100 years of service to their community. So simply put, our 2024- So simply put, our 2024 year was spectacular. 2021, 2025 is shaping up to be just as impactful. We're committed to curiosity and connection through our vibrant programming, outreach, and responsive services, and we're focused on ensuring financial stability to support Kitsap Regional Library our community relies on for years to come. We're proud of where we are and even more excited for where we're heading. So thanks. Any questions?
It's a big deal. It's a lot. I love stats, as you know, and just going over those, seeing the growth and the return and the surges from COVID, all the different programs is just fantastic. Makes me feel really good.
If you haven't yet, I do really encourage you to view the report on the website. We go into a lot more depth, but also I think 2024 marks a pivotal year for our communications team where we really did a lot of work in capturing the impact through photos, and we've got a lot of those photos connected to the stories in the annual report, and I'm really proud of how that just fully tells the story of who we are as an organization. So if you haven't seen it yet, please do.
Yeah, and wonderful report and wonderful progress, wonderful outcomes. And I think that, you know, this is the difference between a for-profit company that will focus on a specific demographic and as opposed to an organization like the library, which is constantly looking to serve every single person in the community, however they can, trying to get to get through them, you know, provide services and access however possible. So, I mean, we just saw with the Journey of Holds how much effort goes into making sure everybody is served. And when you multiply that across the counties, it's just really impressive, the constant effort that goes into serving everybody. So thank you for sharing. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Jeannie. Thank you very much. With that, we will go to 7.07, the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation Annual Report. Wendy.
So we have an annual report as well that's attached, but really our annual report is the same as the library's annual report, right? We exist to fundraise and support the library, and when we are sharing our impacts back to our donors, it's mirroring what the library is sharing as well, right? And so rather than repeat information, what I thought I would do today is focus on the agreement that the library and the foundation have. So we have a memorandum of agreement between the library and the foundation that identifies two key metrics as part of our funding agreement. So those two metrics were identified as they helped the library assess whether the foundation's performance is staying on track. And both of those metrics are tracked over a five-year rolling average. The five-year rolling average is accounting for the years where we may be off target. It's expected that if we are not in a major capital effort, a major fundraising campaign, that we might not be, you know, there might be years where we're not going to be exactly on target with our fundraising results. So the five-year average ensures that we can stay on track over time. So I'm gonna move maybe. Nope. Okay, good. How did you? Okay, perfect. Okay. So let's start with our first metric, return on investment. So I'm not going to read every number on here. You don't need to either. I will just highlight, we started, the library began staffing the foundation, paying for staff in the foundation in 2012. So this starts calculating, how much did the library provide the foundation in support, and how much did the foundation give back to the library? The goal here is that the ROI is at least equal, that we're at not less than 100% when we look at that five-year rolling average. So we will just look all the way down to the bottom, and we can see on 2024, our five-year rolling average, we're at 292%, so definitely maintaining above that, about that 100% or equal percent. And our library has netted over $5 million since it began investing in staffing the foundation. So. And then the other metric we look at is the cost-to-revenue ratio, again, looking at a five-year rolling average. So I'll look at, I'll talk about 2024. Our revenue, we had 893,000 raised this year in '24. That exceeded our fundraising target of 420,000, so we did have a great year in 2024. We, our expenses were as expected, so we did have that, that cost-to-revenue ratio for that year, about 50 cents to raise a dollar. Again, that's our target here for cost-to-revenue ratio is actually 35 cents to raise a dollar. So we were not on target this year. We, and I want to talk a little bit about 2023, because we're in a bit of a window of time now where in 2023, our organization, the foundation, made the decision to add a full-time staffing, full-time position to our FTEs, as well as we launched the feasibility study, engaged with a consulting firm to do feasibility study for a new library in Port Orchard, and then developed that campaign plan. And those were two significant expenses in 2023. And we expected that we would then be going into capital campaign immediately for Port Orchard, and that, that the timeline for that has slowed down with the, with the slow slowing of the timeline of the project, right? And so the board, then our foundation board of directors, did make a decision that we could not sustain an additional position with the foundation. So we did have to make the difficult decision to eliminate that position. We're in a, we're on a course correct now. So we're hoping as we go into, I'll kind of get into the goals for 2025, but as, as we go into 2025, that we, at least on an annual basis, get back on track and on target with our cost-to-revenue ratio. And then also, we just have to wait for that five-year cycle, unfortunately, to see that then impact that five-year rolling average. But that is where we are with that. So I'll talk about our goals. So again, Port Orchard campaign, we do hope that this year our target, our goal is to really secure the lead gift, that that lead gift for the campaign is committed. We're also, we set a $410,000 fundraising goal for unrestricted revenue. We also outlines some specific, underneath that, some specific targets for our grant funding, sponsorship funding, mid-level donors, as well as achieving 350 total donors with Kitsap Great Give. I can say that we did do that. So of course, the year is let halfway. We're halfway through the year. All of this is already underway, so there's one, one target we've made so far. Yay. Planned giving, continuing to market free will, and with a goal of 10 new planned gifts in 2025. And then also, again, continuing to work with our adult services librarians to provide at least two estate planning educational opportunities this year. We actually do have four planned and scheduled. We'll be getting more details out about those as the, as the month goes by, but those are planned and underway, so. And then our board development, we set a goal to recruit three new foundation board members. Again, this is underway. We've actually added two board members to the board. And then also working with our board, of course, to understand what ongoing trainings they need as we move into their retreat in November. And then, of course, supporting our library's initiatives like the 80th anniversary celebration and the library levy, which we have been doing as well. And then our, our communication goals, really talking to our donor community about the impact of their gift, where we do monthly communications out to our donors, as well as partnering with the library to be able to communicate opportunities to the patrons to support the library through the foundation. And then just some factors to consider as we go into 2025. I like to, we, we set our goals, we do, we have our plans, we do everything we can to execute them and hope that they are realized. But donor, there's a lot of external factors that can contribute to donor behavior. So I like to always make sure that we talk about that as well. So we, one of the things we know is that our library is going into levy. Will donors feel that that is their support this year? We, time will tell, right? We hope that they're going to show up and, and support the library through the levy and also support the library through philanthropies. But we won't be able to know for sure if that's how that goes until we get through it, right? Additionally, the economic pressures around inflation, the, the market shifts, higher cost of living impacts the discretionary donations that, that people are making. The federal funding cuts are reducing our, are impacting nonprofits. So we know that we've already heard from one grant funder that we rely on to support one of our important programs at the library, that they've been impacted by the federal funding cuts. So that, again, is going to trickle down and impact our grant numbers and our overall contributions that we receive. And then, of course, there's some tax policy changes in the works as well right now. Those may impact how people make their major philanthropic contributions. And then nationally, we're seeing that fewer households are giving annually. This is really very much tied to the fact that the cost of living has gone up and the inflation, and so nationally, they're seeing that, that those annual gifts are reduced. And then, of course, we know that natural disasters, when they happen, really very much often redirect the gifts that might have gone to local causes to support these national efforts. And so we never know when those are going to happen. We can't predict those and know how they're going to impact it, but those are just things to know that can impact our results. And that's all I have. Any questions? Thank you.
I want to applaud you as well, and mainly, I don't know if everyone knows how hard fundraising is, and just coming through, and I'm glad that you left off with this screen, talking about the different factors to consider, right? There, there's a whole lot of factors that are happening that people are experiencing. And so for the foundation to continue to cultivate and grow those relationships and do all that you do is phenomenal, and that needs to be applauded and recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I would just say, this is a conversation I have with the board, probably every meeting, Eric can attest to this, is to say, when, no matter what, we know what our job is to do as the foundation, we are ambassadors for our library system. We, our job, no matter what is happening, is to talk about all that the library is, all that the library does, and invite our community to support. And no matter what is going on, we can't let up on that. And it's up for, it's up to our community to decide if they can and will. But no matter what, we can always keep, continue to talk about how important our library is for our community. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Wendy. Appreciate the updates and, you know, the 2025 factors, the economic pressures and so forth. Those are always tough for any organization to, to get through, but still you, you continue to march on. So thank you for sharing. Thank you. And I also don't know how, if people realize how small the team is, small but mighty, and a lot of experience, and we're very, very grateful to have you.
If I could just tack on, and you mentioned that, I think both for the job that communications does, and, and, you know, it's very apropos, we would have both of these reports back-to-back. You know, communications' job is to not only publicize the library through all the things, right? The mugs, the, the website updates, all the swag, right? And to be able to tell the story. The foundation does that, too, right? And often, they're working hand-in-hand to figure out which story's going to be told in what way. They have different websites, but to give you a good understanding of how the foundation has been able to thrive, it's, it's not an easy job. You talked about the size of the team, and it's not only the size, it's, it's a non-for-profit inside a non-for-profit, right? And so you've got, you know, two and a half, two and three-quarters individuals, I hate to say any person is three-quarters of an individual, let's just say three. It's Alyssa, Carrie, and Wendy doing the brunt of the fundraising work. It's a Herculean effort to be able to have that return on investment. And to be able to also just do the basic fundraising to fund our staple programs is important. We've got to fund summer. Summer is where the glitz is. It's where we get the biggest return on investment in terms of visitations and in terms of attention for the library. It's the, it's the biggest thing we do. The collaboration that exists between the communications department, public services, facilities, finance, everybody, really. And then to have the foundation be able to earmark those monies on a year-to-year basis to fund, let's just look at that program. We're not even talking about all the rest, because there are other things. But I think the real thing I want to mention here, and this is the hardest part, and we always talk about, it's difficult to be able to get people to understand how the library's funded. More times than not, people see library, government agency, you get funding, right? And it doesn't work like that. And it's all different. It's pretty complex. We get the property tax level. But what people don't understand is that, you know, upwards of 85% of our budget is, is to fund our biggest asset, which is our people. That's great. There is no complaint for that. But not realizing any other monies to be able to do things like summer reading, that's the thing people don't see. And what about the tools of the trade? If I'm a youth services librarian, how am I getting my shakers? How am I getting my puppets, right? There may be some money for that, but where's all the other money? What about being able to have some of these niche services to be able to meet community needs when they pop up? This has been a huge area for libraries over the last 20 years, is that we have, and if anybody's watched the documentary Free For All, it's a good, really expose of how the library came to be, and it's a really fascinating tale of, of like, this is what a library actually does in the 21st century, right? And so, and we learned things that, at least I learned things I didn't know before. I didn't know a lot of these services even existed back in the times of yesteryear, like a swimming pool in the library, or, you know, other services that were, we think are sort of nouveau for, for today, but they weren't. Libraries have always sort of been in this iterative space of, let's meet the community where it's at. But the point being is that, how are we able to fund all those other things? And how is Wendy? how are we able to fund all those other things? And how is Wendy able to be a part of leadership team, but yet be out in the community, supervise her team, and then work collaboratively with every other team here? And, and it's really, it's everybody, right? Because everybody has to be in that space, has to understand what the foundation does. And it is complex, but she does it and makes it look easy. Only other thing I'll say I have to take responsibilities for is that third person she had, it was at my request. And it didn't work out. I mean, that's the thing. I thought we'd get more, I saw how the good this team was working. When I got here, I was, let's add another person. Let's do it. Because maybe we can get more money with more people. It didn't work out to be that. But what I would say, and this whole team has been that way. When we've made mistakes, or let's say when I've made mistakes, because as a new director, I'm going to make mistakes. They've been good at like picking up the pieces, let's move on, let's figure it out, and let's, you know, just figure out a different way to do it. And that's the little engine that could, that is a Kitsap Regional Library. We just find a way to get it done and to make our patrons whole in terms of being able to provide the, not only the resources that are coming from the foundation, and we're grateful that our taxpayers have funded a library here for the better part of 80 years. But I would only give a double shout out to both communications and the foundation for both of their work, because a lot of it doesn't look like, when you look at it, the library work. For us, people who grew up in libraries or just been visiting libraries, it doesn't look like the work you'd see when you come in. It's all the behind-the-scenes, nitty-gritty stuff that you don't think about. You know, her team, Jeannie's team carrying out boxes to and from. And now Wendy into the mug-selling business. It's been a fascinating tale of collaboration and mission-forward sort of focus from our team to make sure that the end of the day, it's the patrons who get all the shine and who are getting the benefits of all of our work. And so I want to lift the foundation and communications up for being able to tell these stories, either through graphs, numbers, or, and pictures, and words, the job that we do. Because people read it and they respond and they show up for whatever we're having in terms of a library event, classes, or other, or the things that are happening. So thank you both to communications and the foundation. Appreciate the reports and appreciate the hard work.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. And it says a lot about, you know, having worked with Wendy on the foundation and you and seen everything that Jeannie's done, is I think it says a lot that the, the three of you and the, and the leadership team in general are not a team that does everything the same year, because that's the way you did it before, right? I think that the team that I've seen is, I've observed has the freedom to try new things, the freedom to adjust, to pivot, to be creative. And I think that's a testament to the staff and the leadership team and how the organization works together and the freedom that you have to, to try new things. So thank you. Thank you, Wendy. Anything else to add? Okay. Thank you, team. With that, we will go to housekeeping, future meeting dates. The next board meeting is Tuesday, June 24th. And with that, thank you very much, everybody. We are adjourned.